Okay, meeting will come to order. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. LeMay?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yeah.
Mr. Tully?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias, would you just check and see if anybody has signed up to speak? Okay, thank you. No school committee communications? And can we have a report from Stacy Bildo, our student representative? Go ahead. Yeah, we're getting a little...
Organizations and clubs. The Community Service Club is currently hosting a food drive for the End 68 Hours of Hunger Program. This organization is making an effort to confront the approximately 68 hours of hunger that some students experience between the free lunch they receive in school on Friday afternoon and the free breakfast they receive in school on Monday morning. Food items will be collected at homerooms through December 19th. There are also donation boxes located in the Teacher Resource Center, at the Security Desk, and in the Student Activities Office. Greater Lowell's Gay Street Alliance hosted the GSA Regional Conference for the gay street alliances from schools in the Northeast Region of Massachusetts here at school on Tuesday, December 9th. This is the first of a series of conferences that will take place this year to help the regions' GSAs connect and learn from each other. Greater Lowell students will be hosting the annual holiday show on December 23rd in the Lecture Hall. On Wednesday, January 7th, students will be participating in the Fourth Annual Empty Bowls Event. Students will stay after school to decorate a number of unique handmade bowls that will be used to serve homemade soups. The decorated bowls will be donated to the event that will take place on Sunday, January 25th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Living Water Center for Hope at Ten Kirk Street in Lowell. Members from both Project Purple and Gay Street Alliance will be attending the Youth Leading Everywhere, Abstaining from Drugs Conference Day on Friday, January 9th, at LaSalle College in Newton, Mass. This conference will help to empower participants to reinforce healthy decision-making skills. Deca students from Marketing and Hotel will be competing on Tuesday, January 13th, with the snow day of January 14th, at the Radisson Hotel and Conference Center in Chelmsford, Massachusetts, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Athletics. Winter sports begin on December 1st with over 400 athletes trying out for one of our winter teams. Girls' basketball has opened their season 2-0, securing wins over PMA and Notre Dame. Boys' basketball opens their season today versus Mystic Valley. Wrestling opened their season, taking two out of three matches at a season, opening quad meet in Drakeit. The team was able to pin down wins over Woburn and conquer Carlisle. The swim and dive team competed in the preseason relay carnival on December 11th. They will open their dual meet schedule at home versus Minuteman on December 17th. Their cheer team had over 40 athletes come out for the team this winter. They will be supporting our boys' basketball team all winter, as well as preparing for competition season in February. Co-op ice hockey with Drakeit and Tingsborough opened their season on December 13th. Six Greater Lowell students are participating on this co-op team. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that I took a run out to the gym while we were taking a break, and the Greater Lowell boys just won their first game against Mystic Valley. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. We'll see you next year.
Okay, approval of minutes? Okay, first minutes of November 20th. Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next item is to approve the minutes of... Release the minutes from the executive session of April 10th. Do you want to do these individually? I'm gonna read them all off. April 10th, 2013, May 30th, 2013, August 15th, 2013, January 23rd, 2014, June 12th, 2014, and September 18th, 2014. Second of... Motion by...
I'd like a second, but I'd like to second it for discussion.
Okay, motion.
I would just like to make a comment that there are some members who weren't available...
Stop, hold on. We're gonna put the motion on the floor. You're making a motion.
Mr. Tully made the motion, I second it.
Mr. Tully made the motion, just second it. Mr. Booton?
The October... I mean, I'm sorry. The June 12th executive minutes, I emailed our superintendent, the chairperson, and our attorney about if they could be released as they were, and I haven't heard back. Have you heard back from Attorney Long?
I did receive an email. I thought that it was a carbon copy to me that was sent to you that...
I thought he was more look... I thought he was looking into it.
Yeah, he said that there was case law regarding it, that he was looking into. I didn't get anything subsequent to that.
I read it on my phone, so I'm not 100%, but I thought he had said he was gonna check more into it. If you can pass the six... Six, 12, 2014.
Okay, substitute motion to approve the minutes has read minus June 12th, 2014. Right, and that's seconded by...
He did say I'm concerned... I'm trying to... I will double-check a case involving him... Inaheer Callham, resident regional school district, which is court-ruled that the settlement document and litigation resolved with similar type of confidentiality cause or public record. But he did write, "I will double-check a case."
And he hasn't been able to get back to us yet.
Has not got back to us, so...
I think that that would be good, too.
Prudent.
Just hold that one out until we can further check it.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Are those made available to the board members once they're released?
They're in your package.
They're in... All of them?
Yeah, these are all in your package right now. Yep, yep, they're all in your package.
The problem was, I think they were... I don't think it... They weren't in the... They were before general counsel instead of...
They were in the minutes.
That they were in the minutes. Yeah, I looked first for the general counsel, but then I found them...
Yeah, they're in your minutes, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we all set?
Do you need the substitute motion again?
Substitute motion was... Was it a Mr. LeMay? Seconded by Mr. Booton.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, through the superintendent, does the attorney go ahead and approve these to be released prior to us voting on it? Right, and he recommended that June 12th be there, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it just seems to me that, you know, we're gonna hold it back for this particular instance and then vote on it a month from now.
But there was a follow-up question with regards to one of... With regards to June 12th that he's looking into, to just double-check to make sure that they should be released as is. So that's the reason why we'd just be doing the other ones, to give him a chance to look into it.
Okay.
Something's been brought to his attention, and he's just gonna double-check.
It just seems to me, if you already approved it, I don't know if we need to keep on asking him and keep on ma... Maybe making that research and that cost of taking student services away by paying lawyers.
Mr. Booton?
I disagree. And I asked him, and he said... He didn't say, "Yes, it's okay." He said, "I will check on it." So obviously, he wasn't aware of that particular item. So I think it's more important that we be frugal about this.
Okay, so...
The frugality, Mr. Booton, would be to go ahead and take his first recommendation rather than question our attorney.
Okay, the motion... The motion that's on the floor right now is to approve the minutes with the exception of June 12th, 2014. We all set? Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
I will say yes on...
Good enough.
September 18th, 2014. And the other ones, I will abstain from because I wasn't part of the board, which I ask for discussion.
We'll note that.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, report of the treasurer? Motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve expenditures in a sum of $6,873,310.87. Motion by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Tully.
Is that to waive the reading of the individual?
Okay, motion to waive the reading by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Okay, now a motion to...
It was made by Mr. Moran.
Yeah, by Mr. Moran.
Seconded by Mr. Tully.
Yep. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. Anything from our council?
We're gonna do executive session.
Okay.
Yep, there's an item for executive session.
Okay, we're gonna take a motion to go into executive?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, good enough. Report of the superintendent-director?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got four items that I'd like to report on this evening. The first one is seeking your acceptance of a donation. We were contacted by Dr. Paul Burke of Chelmsford, Mass. His company has a brand-new Cubify 3D printer that we use in our engineering program. We already have a few of them. And he offered to donate it. Apparently, they bought it, and then they ended up not needing it. So it's got a value of $3,500, and I'd like to get your permission to accept the donation.
Will you approve the motion?
Motion by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. LeMay. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
The second item that I have is with regards to 9C cuts that were recently announced by the governor. 9C is a law that allows the governor, in the case of a budget not being balanced, that there's gonna be a projected shortfall, to unilaterally go into certain accounts and make adjustments in order to balance the budget. The confusion is that he cut $18 million, 27% of regional transportation. He basically pushed it back to 2014 levels. There was a law passed in 2010 that had the intent of limiting his ability to use 9C cuts to cut the transportation line item by more than what Chapter 70 was being cut. There were no cuts to Chapter 70, but yet there was still a 27% cut to transportation account. So what I'm... And this is a $306,750 cut to Greater Lowell, of which you folks in good faith reduced our assessments to the cities and towns by that amount once we realized we were getting that money. So therefore, we're now gonna have to cut that out of our budget, if it stays. So what I'm asking you to do is join a legal fund, contribute to a legal fund. We're members of the Mass Association of Regional Schools. And the Mass Association of Regional Schools isn't just vocational schools. There's 30 vocational school members, but there's 79 members total. And what they've agreed to do is contribute up to $1,000 to a legal fund to have a law firm investigate and look into the 2010 law and whether the governor really has the authority to cut regional transportation. So that's what I'm looking for this evening from you.
Yep, Mr. Booton?
I'd like to make a... I'd like to make a motion to contribute up to $1,000 to a legal fund of the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools for the purpose of hiring a law firm to interpret Section 15 of Chapter 15 of the Acts of 2010 and provide assistance in restoring Governor Patrick's 9C cut of 18-plus million dollars in regional transportation reimbursement.
Okay, motion by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Espinola. You had your hand up. I don't know what this means then, all right?
We gotta get a sec.
Gentlemen, let me just... I'm sorry, but no discussion until the motion is passed.
Okay.
Seconded. Second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Seconded.
I'll second that motion.
All right, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Open for discussion.
Quiet. And Mr. Espinola?
I would like to talk about it. There is lots of discussion going on about this whole situation. It seems to me that the new governor has no appetite for this, nor do the state representatives and the senators. So to put ourselves into a predicament where we would be potentially making them upset with some sort of litigations. If there is a litigation that should be had, shouldn't our senators and our representatives know about this? And why would there have to be some litigation made? If it's a law, then it's a law, and I don't understand why we would need to put litigation forward to prove that it's a law, because those are the same people that made that law.
Well, if you're asking me, I think a lot of people have already talked to our senators and representatives, and so they'll carry that message to the State House. But in the meantime, this is to ask so that unifiably the Mass Association of School Committees with member schools will take action on this also. I'll try to recommend that the state take action.
So just to clarify, the attorney for Administration and Finance, A&amp;F, his opinion is that the governor has the authority and that the law doesn't apply. So therefore, the only way to force the issue would be to call it, you know, to get legal counsel to say, "Hey, we believe the law does apply." That was the intent of the law when it was passed. So there's a conflict of interpretation, I guess. And it's costing us $306,000 that is an unfair... I mean, 27% cut. I mean, most agencies were cut 1.5%. And this is a 27% cut. So I think in the packet, I did write a letter to the governor, and in the letter to the governor, I expressed, you know, the fact that, you know, if you make a cut to Chapter 70, right, then all schools and all children in the Commonwealth will share equally in that cut. Why are we targeting 79 regional schools to share unequally in a cut? Now, the difference being that in order to cut Chapter 70, he's gotta get the legislator's approval. We think that he can't cut, you know... Our interpretation is that he can't cut more than what he cuts Chapter 70. So it's really just trying to get clarification in what we believe the proper interpretation of the law is at this time. It's the first time it's happened. So we do not agree... Mars does not agree with A&amp;F's interpretation. Neither does the law firm that they've already consulted with, believe that that's a proper interpretation.
Mr. Bahu?
I believe this is worth it for the unity of regional schools who are really getting shunned on this particular transportation issue. This is one of those types of issues that's been ongoing in all the years that I've been sitting here, where we're not getting reimbursed the amounts of money that we were expecting to get reimbursed by the state. And if we can go ahead and create this unity, I think it might, you know, in budgets forthcoming, it may give us more transportation money than they had been promised us right along. So, you know, I'm personally backing it only because I think the unity of all the regional schools would probably be best for all of us.
Mr. Booton?
I agree that $1,000 is short money to help our communities. It's my understanding that it's not gonna come out of our budget either way. We're gonna have to go back to Drakeit at $66,000, Dunstable at $1,000, Lowell at $224,000, and Tingsborough at $15,000. That this vote, I really look at, is us helping the member districts because we're not gonna absorb that.
So we already voted to reduce our assessments, okay? So we're gonna absorb it this year, but they're gonna pay for it next year because it'll already be dialed back. And every year after that, they will be assessed for it. Now, we... We, or you, did the right thing in trying to give the money back as soon as possible to the cities and towns. The lesson to be learned is that in the future, we might wanna wait a little longer. We did the right thing in good faith, and now we're getting burned for it. But there will be a cost to the cities and towns in the future because once it gets dialed back, it's gonna be the starting point next year.
Okay, Mr. LeMay?
I think it's a paltry sum, too, to, you know... Mars has their understanding. A&amp;F has their understanding back in the governor. Obviously, this is the first time it's been challenged, I guess, since the law was enacted in 2010. Mars feels they're on solid ground. They think $1,000 is well worthwhile with the 79 districts involved to recoup or maintain the money.
Absolutely.
The other thing, just to... I'm sorry.
I just said absolutely.
Okay, the other thing that I think... Don't think a lot of people realize that 100% of our kids take the bus to go to school. Many communities and cities and the towns don't, but we spend 100% of the money. All right, any other discussion on this? No. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. The third item in my report. Last meeting, I brought to you an updated admissions policy. And there were two things that you asked for us to go back and ask the Department of Education if we could get their blessing and make an adjustment or revision. So we sent that over to them. We didn't get a response. I actually got on the phone today and talked to the person responsible. And she apologized for not getting back to us in a more timely way. But she approved both of the changes that were requested. So one of them was to move up the date that we're gonna send out the acceptances. I worded it the first full week in...
April.
In April, rather than the second week. And then the other one was with regards to the scoring of students' discipline records that an in-house, in-school suspension wouldn't count for the same point level as an out-of-school suspension. So we drafted a new chart that reflects that. And both of those changes are incorporated in the updated document and has been approved by the Department of Ed as well.
Okay. Mr. Bahu?
I just have a question. Actually, I think I have two questions. Firstly, on the sending out the approval letters on the first full week of April, does that mean they'll be at the house? They'll be at the people's homes by the end of that first full week in April? Which I looked at the calendar, it was April 10th this year, April 8th next year. They'll be at the people's doors? It won't be being mailed out?
We're hoping to get them out two or three weeks before that.
Okay, but we're looking to meet this deadline of no later than April 10th.
No later than...
Will it be at the people's... I'm sorry, the student's door or the family's door?
Absolutely.
Secondly, as far as the number of suspensions go. I think Mr. Booton brought up a good idea, whether they're in-school or out-of-school suspensions, how many points do they lose? I just look at that bottom recommendation. It says more than two. Two in-school or one out of school? Is that supposed to be two out of school? Okay, well, it says one out of school, you get 25 points. And then on the bottom one, it says one out of school, you get zero points.
More than two. More than one. So if you get a second out of school, you get... Yeah, the way you read it is the more than two in-school, more than one out of school. So the second out of school, you get zero points.
Okay.
The third in-school, you get zero points.
Okay, two or more, more than one out. Okay, it works out perfectly. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Mr....
Can I make the motion?
I think Mr. Moran had his hand up. I'm sorry. Oh, you can make the second.
I made a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna save this.
Second. Yep. Seconded by Mr. Booton.
We have discussion? I just wanna say, my wife is a social worker in the city of Lowell, and the changes here, she's very, very encouraged by the changes because there are some kids that do make some mistakes and change their lives around and are able to make it a positive jump to Greater Lowell. So I would say, I guess, on behalf of the social workers in the junior high school in Lowell that this policy was far coming before I got on the board. And she just thinks it's a fantastic thing that you give these kids a second chance to have the opportunity to come to this school without being disqualified.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes.
And the last thing in my report is the monthly cooperative education report that I provide you with. And we've got 181 students in paid cooperative education positions. That's 36% of our senior class. And that compares to 36% last year. But I just wanna bring to your attention But I just wanna bring to your attention that last year's thirty-six percent also included unpaid positions. This year, we're only putting the paid positions because we think that, you know, that's what our real goal is. So, so those two thirty, that thirty-six percent included last year, both paid and unpaid. Whereas this year, it's all paid positions. So just, just a slight nuance. Also, we've added, at your request last time, you asked for two columns. We actually put in three because in discussion of the two columns, we wanted to give you a little more information. So, so we, we have a column of unfilled positions, okay? And a column with students who would like to be out on co-op that are, that are eligible. And then students who would like to be out on co-op but also have transportation. Because that, especially in the construction cluster, is an impediment. Even though we have jobs without a car to get to the sites, because the sites are changing all the time, it's, it's difficult, it's, it's a barrier. So we're giving you the three columns. I will tell you that of the, of the unfilled positions, that we have kids that wanna go for the, for the three construction shops listed. It's, it's the car that's the problem, that they don't have transportation. In electrical, we've got two positions, we have six kids that would like to go. We've got two kids that have cars. The problem is that the job.
Same week.
The, yeah, job is, you know, one kid, one week, one kid the next week. So the two kids that want to go are in the wrong week. And we've offered to change their schedule, but they like their schedule, they like their, they don't wanna change their schedule. So, so, so it's a week, you know, so, so, you know, there's, that's the problem, that they're in the wrong week to be able to go. So the week that we, the off-week that we don't have someone in the job, we don't have anybody with a car. And one of the, for instance, the plumbing. So, so the unfilled position is kind of a moving target because she's working to fill them. So two of the unfilled positions, kids have interviewed. They just haven't been selected to start yet. So it's kind of an, you know, that column is sort of a moving target, that she's working to fill them. And you can see that we have a hundred and thirty kids that would like to be out if we, if we can either find positions for them and/or work somehow around the transportation issue, so.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for the superintendent. So you took out early childhood ed. And I, I know of some kids that are out doing that, but they're on, the way, I guess, the model is they're volunteers because they can't get their license till they're eighteen?
Right, so cosmetology and early childhood, the issue with placing them in co-op is until they get their license to be out there, then it's hard, it's hard to find positions.
So would it be helpful for our second page to show who's on an internship? Because we keep adding columns, but I don't think you'll have that. But that's important to know that we do have some out.
Yeah, so the, the early childhood, I think, are the, are the only kids that are out on.
We don't have any on cosmetology.
Well, no, cosmetology, they can't go, they, they can't even go out unpaid. They can't be in the salon until they get their license. So they have to be in here doing their hours to get ready to take the test. So as the year goes on.
Do they get them through, towards the end of the year, though?
As the year goes on, for instance, there's one, if you look at cosmetology, okay?
You have one eligible because of her getting her.
One interest that was eligible. So there's one that has her license that they need to find a position for. And I think what you'll see is as kids get their licenses, they'll be placed.
And turning eighteen.
Well, they, yeah, they can't, they need a thousand hours after they turn sixteen. That's the, that's, that's the limiting factor. And the Board of Registration for Cosmetologists is looking at changing their regulations to allow our kids to, in a vocational program, to start accumulating their testing hours as of sophomore year and not the age of sixteen. Some of our kids that turn sixteen later than others, it's, it's a hardship. But they haven't changed them yet, so we're still, so the governing factor here is they need a thousand hours after their sixteenth birthday. So they'll all be eligible to take the test at different times, depending on when their birthday was. And as they get their license, if you look at last year, they, they generally end up on co-op shortly thereafter.
I had another question. Sports, how, how, how many kids are not going out on co-op because of sports? Is that another issue that you find?
So the, the column that shows you there's a hundred and thirty kids that would like to be out, there's also kids that are eligible to go, but choose not to go for reasons such as they, they're playing sports. Although most of our co-op employers are great, they let the kids leave early to.
I guess that's more the question I'm asking.
But I think it's more of a personal issue with students that it's just, you know, it's, it's hard enough to maintain your grades and play sports and then to balance a co-op job too. It's kind of a personal. So some, some kids don't play sports all three seasons. So they'll go on co-op on the seasons that they're not playing sports. But yeah, there is, and, and other reasons, kids are involved in clubs.
And our coaches are flexible with that, understanding that work is.
Coaches and the employers are, are, are very good around working with that, yeah, yeah.
The last thing I.
And I'm sure we have a lot of kids who are playing sports that are on co-op too, but.
Okay, the last thing I just wanna say, during the interview process with superintendents, we did go to one school and I think they had eight or ten kids out on co-op. I mean, they're a little bit smaller school, but not that much smaller, so keep up the good work.
But we're a vocational school, and having kids prepared for, to, to go on either to college or to work is what we're all about. It's what makes us difference, different from the non-vocational schools.
This was a vocational school we visited.
I know. And, and co-op is the, is the proof that kids are ready to, to go out on the job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lemay?
Roger, just back to Cosmo again. So what was the case? I, I noticed there was zero percent in thirteen, but yet nine percent this year. Was it a matter of people being licensed more with a vehicle versus not with a vehicle?
No, it had, I think it had more to do with kids' birthdays and not having their license yet. I think last, this year, we had, we have three kids on co-op, right? And we have one that would like to go. So apparently, we have four.
Last year, you had none.
Four, yeah. And I think it probably had more to do with birthdays, that they hadn't taken their tests to get their license. If you, if you look at the asterix down the bottom, please note, cosmetology students must be licensed. And, and it's got to do with when they get licensed.
They have to be sixteen.
They have to have a thousand hours after they turn sixteen, before they're eligible to take the tests with the state. Once they take the test and get their license, then, for the most part, they then matriculate out onto co-op. And it, it has, so it's a, it's a, it's a governing factor. And last year, we, we just didn't have anybody at this point in time yet that had passed the test.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, let me just ask you a couple of questions. I was reading a New Hampshire paper recently, and it sounded just like what you're talking about now. But in the community colleges, they're kind of encouraging students to get into a community college for technical backgrounds. So they must be jumping from A school, whether it's academic or technical, going right into the community colleges. But I, for some reason, I was under the impression that if a student was younger, I don't know what age, but don't they need, don't you have to send an instructor out with them? Rather than have the facility or company that you're sending the students to? Be supervised by whoever the person is in that business?
Not on cooperative edu, cooperative education allows students that meet the criteria to go out and basically transition to work rather than come to school. The job of the co-op coordinator is to monitor that placement, to provide support to the student and to the employer so that the placement is successful.
So one, one of those requirements being age?
Yes, yes. They have to have a, they actually have to have a co-op work permit if they're under eighteen.
Yep.
As well, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Actually, that thousand hours, that hasn't changed in fifty years. I mean, they, they've just needed a thousand hours.
Their, their proposal, a group, actually, a, a committee that I served on, the State Advisory Committee for, for Voc Ed to the Board of Education, we identified that as something that we wanted to try and change with the state, so we had many meetings with them. And I think we've convinced them that when they change their regulations, they're gonna change it to twelve-hundred hours. But for, for Chapter Seventy-four students in a vocationally enrolled program, regardless of age, the hours will start in the, at the beginning of the tenth grade. So those will be the two changes which will give our kids a chance to get to a thousand hours by the end of junior year, so they can be on co-op all of senior year. Now, the problem is, when a state regulatory agency changes regulations, first they get them all together that they wanna, and then they have to go out to public comment, and it's just been a real long process. I actually have a meeting coming up next month.
I mean, I think, you know, like, you know, it'd be good if we could say, if the kids did eight-hundred hours, they're working towards their thousand hours. But probably, someone who's taken a cosmetology course out of a vocational school might object to that, I don't know, you know what I mean?
So the, the real hardship with the current regulation is if you have, and, and there's actually an example of this at one of the schools, and, and we made this pitch to the, to the board. The valedictorian for their senior class was a cosmetology student who didn't turn sixteen until junior year. And therefore, never graduated with a license. And was, didn't have the thousand hours when she graduated. She actually, while she was in college, had to come back and fill in and try and work the rest of her hours. So that was like, you know, and she was at a level of achievement higher than anybody else in her class who was on co-op and had their license.
They should make an exception.
So we, we really did make a hard case, and I think that, that, you know, you'll see some regulatory changes at some point, I don't know when. But it's in the works to try and make it fairer.
No, I mean, I had a family member who was a, cause, this is fifty years ago, and it, it was a thousand hours then, you know what I mean?
But age, it shouldn't be based on age, it should be based on whether, I mean, if you can pass the test and you've got the, you've got the hours, you just weren't sixteen yet, then that's, you know, that, that's what it should be based on, not on when your birthday was. So they're into, you know, it's an antiquated way of doing it, unfortunately. And we're working on changing it. Thank you very much. One last item, I just, just wanna wish everyone a happy, you know, happy holidays and a restful vacation with family as well.
You as well, you as well.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you also.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Roger.
Reporter, the business manager, Mr. Garabedian.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things, just general information. The first is the school transportation contract with North Reading Transportation. As you recall, last year, we exercised an option to renew based on the Consumer Price Index for year four. And now this, this is in year four, we have one more year option to renew for, for next school year. And I've spoken with the superintendent and spoken with the company president. And, you know, all interested in renewing again. So I'll be coming before you next month, once we get the, the index information, which should be coming out, I called today. It was supposed to be published today, so it should be on the computer, you know, the website tomorrow. I'm, I'm expecting around a one-point-six percent increase, somewhere in that range. So we'll keep you posted and bring it back.
Can I ask a question about this? Through you, Mr. Chairman. The current gas prices that have been dropping, diesel, everything like that. Been very happy, I know there's limited complaints from the parents, they seem to be a good company. No issues that I've heard of, and you've always spoke complimentary of them. But with somebody else bidding out going forward, would that adjust because of the lower gas prices?
We have a, we have a inflation, a fuel escalation clause in the contract, whether it goes up or down fifteen percent from what the pricing was at the start of the contract. It was never before, you know, we, we were always within the range, up or down. Now it's getting close to where, if it goes below by more than fifteen percent, then we would recognize a benefit.
Savings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Is that without any action, it just automatically happens?
No, I mean, actually, we're, we're involved in that right now. You know, we're getting pricing from, you know, to compare and compare to the initial contract and do the tabulation to see if it's at that level and how much we'll be getting back.
So, so if it doesn't hit that level and we're close? Would you say it was a fifteen percent difference?
Fifteen percent, yeah.
I mean, if we're, we're at twelve percent, thirteen percent, you know, we're teetering, we don't hit it.
It doesn't, it doesn't kick in?
It may not kick in, but my point is, if somebody else can reduce their costs by twelve percent or ten percent on the gas portion, because the labor costs are still gonna be the same, although who knows, they might be going up with the new minimum wage law. I, I just didn't know if it's something to consider.
Well, I think.
An RFP for.
Well, I, I, I would hesitate in going out in this year. And we just got a new fleet of buses from the company this past, this current school year. If we were to go out, you know, those prices are gonna go up because somebody else is gonna have to bid on, on providing the buses for this, for this job.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Bahu?
I think our transportation company's doing a wonderful job. I remember when they started, the buses that they were using were, you know, old and didn't really seem like, you know, they were gonna last much longer. And they have developed, they have gotten a whole new fleet of buses. I see them come by my, my shop daily, I see them all over the city of Lowell. And they really stand tall and they make us look really good. Inside and out, they're clean, as well as the drivers are always on time, the students are never waiting. And it just seems like they're doing a very good job. And, you know, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and renew them for one more year.
I'll be, I'll be bringing that back for a vote of the committee next month with the information, further information. Thank you. The second item was just an update. As you know, we're plodding along with the budget, you know, the FY16 budget. I've met with most of the departments, department heads, I'll be meeting with some more next week. We're, you know, it's starting to come together. And once I get the first pass together, I'll be sitting down with the superintendent and, you know, going over it further and get further direction as we move forward in the process. I mentioned in here that because of the new governor coming on board, typically, we get the, the state budget is released like the third week in January. But because of the change in leadership, he's granted an extra thirty days. So he could have up till third week in February to release his proposed budget. So we'll just have to work with our projections and hopefully, once we get the numbers out from the state, we can solidify our budget.
Mr. Tully? Rather than wait till May, because the way, the way the governor's budget works, it never works, look at it, we're in, what, December? And they're rejecting last year's budget, you know, so. Until they can handle their own.
Yeah, but it's.
Internal affairs, they, they shouldn't be putting us in the spot.
Right, I know.
Actually, they put this, this in the spot by, you know, just what they just did.
Yeah.
Really, we could go back to the communities, I guess, and ask for that money back, but it, it's politically bad.
Yeah.
But, you know, the governor and nobody else is actually at fault for that.
Yeah.
You had to get some numbers together that are realistic.
Unfortunately, we have, by the DESE guidelines, we have to have our budget voted like forty-five days before the first town meeting. So that pushes us, closes the window further. That's it? That's all I have. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, nothing out of our business, we're not gonna take any of this, right?
Right.
All right. Under new business?
New business.
Administrative contract that's going, we're going into a.
Executive session at the end of the meeting?
Yep. Okay, and next item is the city of Lowell installation of water meter data collection system request. Mr. Getchere? Step right up and make yourself comfortable.
Salas, what was your name?
Oh, Mr. Getchere, would you give me your name and address? And make sure this is correct.
Eric Getchere, thirty-four Livingston Ave. I'm the executive director for the city of Lowell's Water Department. Tonight, we were before you asking that you would approve a memorandum of understanding for the city of Lowell to place a collector on, an, an antenna on the outside of the building. Currently, there's one located out there for the city of Lowell's MIS Department. We're looking to do this because right now, back in August, we were looking to, to start this program. It's an eight-point-five million dollar residential meter upgrade for the city of Lowell. And, and when we looked into the package, the whole outlook of the contract, we looked at is, we wanted to make sure that we had redundancy in our meter-reading collector operation. So what you wanna do is make sure that your infrastructure is built before we go to the residents and ask them for, to put in the meters and put the reading devices on, on their units themselves. So we did a infrastructure check, and we came up that we needed five more collectors to make sure that the outskirts of the city were being read well. Greater Lowell is the furthest point for Lowell going towards Tainan Borough. Currently, we have one on the water treatment plant, but it doesn't give us the signal strength that it would give us if we had a collector and the redundancy, obviously, if we had that pole on the current tower that Greater Lowell has. So we're before you tonight, just asking that you would approve the memorandum of agreement with the city of Lowell. The city of Lowell will basically put the equipment up, they'll be liable for the equipment that's there, just like anyone's residential home, as we, we put metering equipment in, in your homes. Each home has a water meter and has an outside reading device. And if that reading device breaks, the city of Lowell is obligated to make sure that that equipment is maintained well. And, and that's currently what we're, we'll do here for, for Greater Lowell. Greater Lowell has one of the lower signal strengths, and it would basically give us twenty-nine options to meter that's currently in there, would be able to tell, you know, if there's a leak in the building or, or things like that, high usage, so. I would entertain any questions, if you have any questions on the memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Tully?
I just happen to have about six questions.
Perfect.
All right. Do you want me? All right. This memorandum, when it's all said and done, I wanna make sure that there is zero exposure to Greater Lowell, whether it's equipment, whether it's staff, whether any cost at all. And I'm not sure that the memorandum actually takes care of that. And what I also like to see is a cross-insurance policy so that, that Greater Lowell will cover that equipment and the city of Lowell will have a cross-policy, so we're, we're cross-covering everything ourselves. But I think you said that Lowell is not, is self-insured, so they can't do that. But they can do it if they wanna do it. So I wanna make sure that when we get all through, and that's up there, no matter what happens, there's never a cost to Greater Lowell for anything.
Much like every resident in the city who has meter and equipment in their home, the city of Lowell is responsible for every piece of equipment that is water-metered or not by agreement. So we don't, we don't have specialized agreements with every resident in the cities. And, and tonight, we're, we're putting forth a memorandum of understanding that on our legal end, they believe that that will cover everything you're asking.
But I'm gonna make sure for, for our end, that we agree. And as far as access to the system, Saturday afternoon, someone needs to get access to it. You know, and, and somebody from the water department isn't gonna just drive into the facility and go up on, on the top of the building without someone knowing that they're there, right?
Absolutely, they, they will not be here on a Saturday.
And about what, what, what prevents that? How do you take care of that?
Well, it, it's like every agreement with, with every place. We don't just impede on anyone's private property, we, we make sure that we have appointments before we go anywhere out of the water department. That, that's, we, we're not gonna just.
And this isn't like dealing with a house, you're dealing with another public entity. The, so before anybody comes on the facility, you either go through the superintendent or, I would assume MacBrenner would be the one.
Sure, yeah, and I spoke to Mark about that. Sure, yeah, and I spoke to Mark about that earlier, because I had, I had called on your concerns, and we won't be entering your building without Mark or the superintendent in, or the assistant superintendent being notified.
All right, a couple of other things. The, during the construction process, I talked to you about this last night, during the construction, when you're doing the work, it'll be not touching anything that we have done the construction on, so that you're not going to affect any of the work that's already been done.
Absolutely not. We, we worked with Mark on that, we'll be putting a temporary line out there, and then the conduit will come afterwards. We're, we're working with the Mark Burne on all the changes and upgrades.
And the permits with the time of change, that's something you're taking care of?
Absolutely.
All right, now, the other thing is, in, which I think is more for the city's benefit than ours, this contract or memorandum lists a specific, three or four specific pieces of equipment. If I was the City of Lowell, for instance, installation of Andrew DB636 antenna, while if two years from now, it should be DB637 we reckon, this one doesn't, you've got to come back to us. So I would think you'd have something in here that would allow you to replace with similar equipment, but being tied to one antenna of a specific, specific number doesn't make any sense.
Well, it does on our end, because it goes back to what you were stating before, any installation changes or anything, we would want to come and coordinate with the board and also with Superintendent Bourgeois and the plant director, Mark Burne. We're going to coordinate those changes anyway, so we would rather come back to you and make sure that you're aware of what's going on at the same time, so that, that's really...
I mean, the size of, the size of what you're putting up, it's very small.
It's a, it's a, there's a pole that will go on the outside, and then there's a room that will have two units inside.
Right, so does, does the board really need to get involved in the fact that you changed from a 636 to a 637?
I was hoping not, I wouldn't have to be here tonight.
Anyway, that's, that's my point, I just want to make sure we're...
Yeah, and I, I do agree with you, I, I, you know, it went through the city council, the memorandum of understanding, we went back and forth, you know, our lawyers with, with the school's attorney, Michael Long, and, you know, it was something that the city was comfortable with, it was something that Attorney Long, I believe I spoke to, and that, that our attorney spoke to, and they felt comfortable with that language.
Chairman, to the superintendent, has the attorney looked at this and he's okay with everything?
So the, the attorney representative is here. Mr. Long couldn't be here, he's still incapacitated due to health issues. But Kelly Gonzalez is here with us, so I'll let you talk to her.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it was circulated, we, we made a red line, excuse me, of the memorandum of agreement, we had some concerns with the draft as it was written, and we actually communicated that to the City of Lowell's council. Did everyone receive a copy of our red line?
Yes. Is this the one you sent?
Just yesterday.
Okay, yeah, so we got it, the one, that's the same one you printed out today?
Yes.
So I don't have to go back and forth, thank you.
So I think some of our edits do address Mr. Telli's concerns, I think there are a couple that may need a little bit more work. The perspective we were coming from was we, we didn't really know exactly where the committee was in the process of negotiating this, or sort of the technological aspect of that. I admit to having no knowledge of how the water collection system works. So we made sort of minimal edits, if you will, to sort of address some of the concerns about the district's liability. If there are still lingering concerns, we're happy to sort of beef it up a little bit. We weren't sure what the timeframe was, or sort of what your temperature was on this. From what we had, it seemed like this was based on our previous agreement between the City of Lowell and the school district, which is why we didn't do as much editing, and it's somewhat informal. There are a couple of changes that probably are worth noting, since Mr. Telli did address them specifically. So the first one, which is one of the big ones, is the liability aspect. The way it was written was, I thought, a little bit odd, actually, that you were indemnifying each other for each other's negligence, which is just strange. We could possibly beef it up a little bit more to propose putting a little bit more liability on the City of Lowell, since it sounds like there's not necessarily much benefit to the school district for this. I don't know if Lowell would agree to that or not, but we're certainly happy to try and beef that up a little bit. In terms of access, we did sort of address the concern of minimizing disruption to the school district, and we said that it would be coordinated as needed. What we were thinking of was sort of minimizing disruption to students in class and the academic environment, but certainly we don't want people coming in here at Sunday at midnight when there's no custodian on duty and traipsing through the building. So we could also add a little more there to kind of address, you know, you need to coordinate with the superintendent X number of days before, something along those lines. It may be a question for Mr. Getchere, I don't know if there's ever an emergency reason to come up here, or if it's something that you can sort of plan in advance?
It, it, it really gets into the lack of understanding of the system. We've had them in the city for four years, no one's touched any of them. So it's the lack of understanding for the system, is that there will be no access to this building without, number one, going through the superintendent and the plant. That's, that's everywhere throughout all of our infrastructure that we have in the City of Lowell. So that's really something that the city council never really looked at, it's not something our lawyer would look at, it's not something that, this is about a lawyer, lawyers looking at lawyers, so you get two lawyers that are going to disagree on, on liability when neither lawyer knows the metering system. So we're going to write things that really won't pertain to anything, and we're just going to charge off to hours and hours. This really proposal comes before you, basically saying that, you know, we want to do this during Christmas vacation, and there's a reason why, because we have the, the company coming in during Christmas vacation to put it in four other locations that have all accepted it, including East Chelmsford Water District, who has no ties to the City of Lowell except that they purchase water off of us. We want to be able to read their water system. So there's really no access issue. The access issue is, is something that's, you know, being added, and, and it's not really something that's ever been brought up a concern. I would, you know, I know our word isn't paper documents, but we don't access Greater Lowell currently at any time outside of your, your daily workload, and also, we notify when we come in the building. You have a water meter in the building, it has a reading unit on it, and we don't come in now. So the liability end on access is not something that has ever been brought to our attention, and to push off this project and cost extra days' worth of unit work would, would not be efficient on our end, as, as we're looking at crunching pennies during this project. The whole unit installed, everything, will take less than four hours. It, it, it's not a big unit, it's not something that, it's smaller than a bubble. So I understand the concerns, but...
I, I think the question that I have, and, you know, I'm hearing the attorney saying, you know, she doesn't really know a lot about water, and I'm hearing you saying, you know, this is about a transmission. What does this equipment actually do? Because I'm also hearing, you know, Committee Mintelli indicate that, you know, are you going to have to come in here on a Saturday afternoon, or in a midnight on, you know, on Christmas Day, to go ahead and fix this equipment? Tell, tell us what it does and why you may not, may or may not have to fix it.
Again, it goes back to the, the initial statement, it's a redundant program. You're putting up one collector, which, which collects data from residential meters, as well as Greater Lowell's meter. Greater Lowell's meter will send a signal up to it, it will collect the data once an hour. It's a redundant program. Right now, there is no meter on Greater Lowell, there's no antenna or anything on Greater Lowell, it's still being read. It's being read by the one at the water department. So it's basically a backup setup. Once we put all of these meters in homes, we will no longer be able to read a water meter from the outside. So what we want to make sure of is if the one, the Lowell Water Department goes down, that we have one in place, so we don't have to get into these homes right away, and we don't have to fix that collector at midnight, or at two o'clock in the morning, or an off-hour. We have the redundancy to the program, so now that it will send it to the other unit. That, that's really what the gist of it is, it just collects information from the meters so that it reduces the cost of, of our workload on, on the meter readers, and now we can switch them over into maintenance people and help us do other areas of the city and make sure that we can keep up with these programs. There's really no off-hour stuff, there's no access issues, but again, it's my word versus, you know, a written document.
How often do you replace this equipment? I heard a 686, a 687, I heard the new updated version and such like that, so how often is this stuff up?
It depends, but it's probably twenty-five, thirty years usage, yeah. It's, it's as long as the old meter system, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, that's actually a question for you too about the technology. So part of it's an antenna, right?
An antenna, yes. That's the only part that would be on the outside of the building.
Okay, so let's say, for example, there's a hurricane, a, a ice storm, or what have you, and the antenna breaks on Christmas Eve. Is that something that you guys would need to fix immediately? Do you need to get into the building to fix that, or is that something that could be fixed days later? That's, I think, what my question...
Going, going back to the initial statement, the one at the water treatment plant will read if this antenna breaks. It's a redundant program, they overlap, it's a system that will overlap. So if one breaks, the other one will come up. That's, that's what it will do, it's a redundant process.
Mr. Getchere, all our water coming from Lowell?
Yes.
So Eric, the, what you're actually installing is on our tower, you're going to put in, attach an antenna?
Correct.
To our tower, we have a tower that...
You have an open location on your tower that, that...
You're going to attach an antenna, and then there'll be a wire going, or a cable going from the antenna to a, a box?
That will be inside of...
Two square feet, okay, and then, and that's it, right?
Correct.
It's just that box and a wire going up to an antenna fastened, that's what you're asking for permission to do?
Yes, there's two boxes actually that would be set, there's already some boxes inside the library area that they want to move from, the MIS Department in Lowell has them there, and they also have already an antenna on the building. So if they have to maintain that, what's the current agreement with the board that would let them maintain it currently? It, it, it's the same agreement that, that's in place, it would just, will move that unit from the library, I believe, to another area down three hundred feet closer to the antenna, so now there's less cable run, it would be, and it would work with the building committee at the same time.
Mr. Espinola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it appears that we always have some sort of agreement with the City of Lowell in good faith, and, and it doesn't appear to me, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Getchere, that if this system was to fail, there would be some emergency, you would need to get up there immediately so that nobody would get water, you'd have to fix that so that they would get water, so you'd be able to contact somebody at the school to make arrangements to take care of anything that needs to be addressed. I, I think that, you know, with modified arrangements with our current agreement, that is amicable to our attorneys, I see no reason, I think the things that we're talking about right now are, it's already in place, and, you know, to be good neighbors, let's, let's help them out.
I, I just wanted to say, Ms. Gonzalez, you and Mr. Long did a great job with these. As I started to read through this, and then I saw the revision come over, I thought, fantastic, because those were some of the questions that Mr. Telli had. So I think you've done a great job for us, it's worth it, and the liability part was one that stuck out, that, you know, not being a lawyer, but, so, I'm not crazy, well, at least not for this. I, I think we're covered, I think it's one of the sending communities, I mean, it's my community, and I think it would be helpful, and after hearing the explanation by Mr. Getchere, I, I think it's something we should do. Thank you.
Mr. Wood, let me just ask one question, Eric, I, I have no problem, other than the fact that the first few times you go up onto the roof, and I just, a little protective, because we're getting new roofs on there, and as we know, sometimes someone steps in the wrong place, there's a nail hole for the rest of their life, that the first time, time you go up, or first few times that you go up, or whoever goes up in that, goes with one of Mark's people or someone from the school, just so the weekend, make sure that your people understand the way that we would like the wire run to take place, or whatever, just so there's no...
Yeah, I, I would agree, and, and any time that we've been in the building, I believe it's the superintendent and Mark Burne's policy that we are to go through the building with the maintenance people. So we've never been in this building without a maintenance person with us, or Mark Burne himself, so we've never, ever came in your building without anybody. One other thing is that the reads, again, going back to whether we'll need to access it at nighttime, we currently read in the City of Lowell quarterly bills, we read every ninety days, okay? So with this device will do is give us a reading every hour, but that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, if it goes down, we need that reading every hour, it means that we have the capability through the system to do that, and we'll get them so we can look back, but it's not something that would be an immediate need unless it was that read season, but you could go back one day and take the reading from that day, or you could go forward two days and take the reading from that day. So, you know, it's a program that's together, the, the MOU from the City of Lowell has been voted on through the city council, any changes would have to go back to the city council for their approval, and also would push off this installation by two months.
You know, the, the reason I've been through all the questions is because what was originally distributed to us was very sparse, I mean, there was a poor agreement. So, so this, with these changes, you know, will you be okay with this as has been redlined?
It will push off the, it will push off the project by two months.
So, so in other words, back to my, there's no provision in any of the questions?
I, I've never seen these changes, the first I heard of it was today, that there were changes added to this, so I never saw them. Last Thursday, I believe, we were back in communications, and the memorandum of understanding was passed back and forth from attorneys, again, I only spoke to one of the attorneys, the city's attorney, I didn't speak to Attorney Long. I was under the impression Tuesday, when we went before the council, that it was something that was in good faith, back and forth, the memorandum of agreement was something that was actually better than what we have in place for the current stuff that's out there. So I don't see any liability on, on any part that isn't already existing out there and on the equipment that's out there, and in fact, I think that you're actually covered better with this memorandum of agreement, because, you know, Mark Burne asked that we put this forward through Superintendent Bourgeois, and, and we did it in good faith, back and forth, and, and we went to the council, so we're hoping that we can get this fast.
When was the original agreement? I just never remember that.
I never saw the original agreement.
You never did either?
No.
Mr. Booton?
I, I mean, one of the things that did come up, and I guess I'm the stickler for this, the quarry, which Mr. Talley's added, wasn't in the original agreement.
The quarries were done, Cheryl already has them, they're already done on the two...
There's nothing in the agreement about having them done.
Yeah, they were already done.
Something we should have, especially with the new federal law.
Well, you can, you can require that of any visitor that comes into the building, you don't need to put that in, in writing. That's up to the superintendent's policies.
We're having an agreement with you, I, I would like, I'm glad it got put in there.
So, so just to be clear, the timeline on the way this happened was I received the agreement, forwarded to Attorney Long, I believe, last Friday afternoon, okay? Attorney Long wasn't able to get the recommended changes until yesterday, and I forwarded them to you today. So on Tuesday, the Lowell City Council voted on the original proposal, and they passed it. It doesn't have any of the changes, because the timeline was so short that, that, that didn't have time to occur. I guess my question would be, and I guess it would probably to Attorney Gonzalez would be, would it be possible to approve the installation of the equipment, and then work out the fine tuning of the agreement, and get it, and get that passed by us and by the City of Lowell without interfering with the project moving forward?
The, the thing that concerns me is that our attorney spoke to Attorney Long, none of this was raised prior to Tuesday night, and it came in this morning.
Yeah, there was a...
It's on our end.
I can't speak for Attorney Long, but I was standing outside of his, in his office, actually, when he was speaking to the lawyers for Lowell, and he made very clear that he couldn't approve anything until he spoke with the school committee. So it, it wasn't signed off on by Attorney Long before the Lowell City Council...
Well, we wouldn't need the sign off from Attorney Long, we need the sign off from the committee, and, and basically, we, we went back and forth on, on the agreement, and there were no changes at that time. It was, okay, I'm going to put this forward to the superintendent and the committee at that point, and that's what we thought was going to happen, and then the changes came in.
Well, I, I think the issue here is that, you know, Attorney Long has, there's a little time lapse going back and forth, and I would assume we're going to be hearing from Attorney Long, or you're going to deliver that back to him, we'll be hearing from him shortly, and we can probably make a decision at that particular...
This is the final?
This was the final that we were proposing to you, I mean, if you have additional edits, we're happy to make additional edits as well, we, we sort of wanted to see where the committee was on this in general and make any additional changes, but this was sort of a first half of major issues.
Does he have...
Can I make a motion?
Not that I, we haven't...
We've never seen it, that, that, I don't know how we, we never saw it, and so...
Mr. Lemay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on what Eric is here for, is, as a former city councillor in Lowell, I can attest that this is nothing more than a reciprocal agreement that we've had with other towns on other issues, whether it's water or whatever. As far as being rendered harmless, as far as indemnifying, I'm sure our city manager, who is an attorney, and Mr. Long and his partners are going to dot the i's and cross the t's where they're needed. We obviously want something in writing, but this thing is not a huge building. Like he said, it's the size of a bubba. It's to assist the city's backup on reading meters to go out for billing. And like he says, it reads it every hour, and the bills only go out quarterly. If something happened to that thing, it's not a big deal. And if it was something with the antenna, like anything on a roof equipment, you have to abide by OSHA. And, you know, if it's too close to the edge, you got, there's guidelines that OSHA puts forth too. I don't see this as a big deal. They wanted to do it during the school vacation, so no one would be around. And like he said, it's only going to be four hours. I'm prepared to adopt this document tonight.
Can I just say something? The problem is with adopting that, they can't do it because the city council isn't meeting for two weeks. So I'd like to make a motion, based on what the superintendent said, that we allow the installation with the understanding that our edits will be forwarded back to the city council for approval within 30 days. And then if the city council does not approve of our edits and no agreement can be made, the City of Lowell will come back and remove the items.
Okay, the motion is to allow the installation of the-
Of the equipment?
Yep.
Ending final adoption of the agreement?
They're going to come in and install it. But then, within 30 days, they need to accept our edits. And if they don't, my motion is we can allow them to come in. But if within 30 days, the city doesn't agree to what we agree on, actually, I'm going to go 45 days, just in case we have to have another meeting.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Tully.
No, it's, you know, I think, I don't think anyone has a problem with you, you know, of what's going to get done. It's just dotting the i's and crossing the t's. But, you know, this document, I don't care if it's 45 or 60 days, but, you know, because Lowell is going to have, you know, their idea of what it should be, just like that. So, you know, I'm not concerned about coming in and doing it. That's fine. It's just, you know, let them get an agreement together, you know, at a later date. The intent is the same.
There's a couple of concerns. I don't have the authority to just say that they're going to adopt your policy, that you're going to adopt tonight with them crossing the i's and dotting the t's. I don't have that authority. So I won't be able to put in any equipment, even if you vote to tell me to put in the equipment. I work for the city manager. I work for the city council. The original piece, I don't know where that memorandum went. I don't know if it was included in your packet on Friday. I don't know if it was included. I see that a different memorandum's in front of you. I don't have the authority to put the city's funding that way.
The original agreement, I believe, was placed in the superintendent's report.
So wouldn't that be the thing that they would be voting on?
That's what is being asked of you to consider. That was what, I believe that's what was approved by the Lowell City Council.
So the thing that's, the piece that's in the agenda as it stands is the piece that you put on the agenda tonight. And there was no substitute motion to remove, to go to a backup agreement until just now. But I don't have the authority to say that the City of Lowell is willing to go put up equipment based off an agreement that may be signed or may not be signed and then make them pay for another uninstallation of equipment that got put in. The equipment's very expensive. It's a $50,000 collector. If I go and purchase this, put it on a building, and now I have to take it down, not only is the install not there, but now I lost $50,000 of the city's funding.
Let me just do a house-
I mean, we have two government agencies here trying to work together.
Let me just do a housekeeping thing. You made a motion, Dan.
Nobody seconded it?
Not yet.
You seconded it, ready? We need a second for that motion. All right, second by Mr. Tully. All right, so the issue is just the time. We got paperwork that seems to agree with you, but it's not complete.
Excuse me, though. You just said if, even if this motion passes, you won't be installing it, then?
I won't be installing it, no. I don't have the authority to do that.
You can bring us back to the manager and see what he's-
I won't be able to, Curtis. You know the city council better than I do. Today's Thursday night. If I go back on Friday, he has to get to the council on Tuesday, and they're off until after the first of the year, so.
So I have a different solution. I'm going to withdraw my motion if it's a moot point, that it's not going to matter. I would suggest they come back and be able to install this during the February vacation. Look to do it then, if my motion isn't going to do anything, if you really think that there's no way the city would allow it?
I don't have the authority to do that.
So let me ask you the question then. You may not have the authority to okay it, but the city could say to you, well, they've approved it. Let's go forward and do it. Is that true?
No, because you were approving something different than what the city council approved. The city council approved-
And the manager has no leverage or no authority?
We had to go to the city council for the initial approval, so.
Yeah, there's no meeting. And tomorrow's Friday, noon time.
There's no meeting this Tuesday or the following.
I withdraw my motion.
Is that George?
The motion we accept. The memorandum, and then get on with it. We've been dealing with the City of Lowell Water Department forever, buying the water. The City of Lowell Water Department has always maintained their equipment and kept their customers happy. I know I'm a customer of the City of Lowell. I've dealt with them. And I don't know what the big deal is about letting them do this. This is for everybody's good. It's a common, the common good. This isn't a private contract.
People haven't approved it, George. People haven't approved it. That's the only problem, all right?
I think it's much ado about nothing, to be honest.
Make a motion?
I make a motion we accept.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Tatsias to accept the proposal seconded by Mr. Espinola. Now, did you want to say something?
I think we all represent our respective communities. And three of our, four of our communities all use Lowell's water. I think Lowell funds a big portion of this school. I think a lot of the students that go to this school come from the City of Lowell. I think we've always had a very good relationship here at the Greater Lowell Tech with the City of Lowell. And if this is about collecting data and making their government, Lowell's government, more efficient, as well as utilizing a $50,000 piece of equipment that sounds to me like will probably never be, have to be checked or go down, or there will have to be any emergency visits to it, then it just seems like it's something that Mr. Tatsias said. It's much ado about nothing. I'm sure that we can come up with some type of agreement with the two, with the city solicitor and Mr. Long's law firm that states that, you know, if there's any liabilities, it's on you. And I don't think that it needs to go ahead and go much further than that.
See, that's the thing is, Eric said he can't do that. You know, because my only concern is protecting the school from anything. And the, two points. You know, I'm not sure why it was last week or whatever, you know, 10 days that this comes up and has to get voted on. And secondly, if I could ask Kelly this, is the way that this agreement is presented to us for our up or down vote, do we have a risk anywhere?
I think you do. And to be clear, I'm not, I certainly understand the benefit of working together with municipal agencies. My largest concern is the liability aspect. I mean, if the tower breaks off and, you know, hurts someone or hurts equipment, or someone up there slips and falls while installing the equipment, or does put a foot through the brand-new roof, who pays for that? And I'm not suggesting that Lowell Water Department wouldn't sort of step up and pay for that, especially if that's been their history. It's just not included in the agreement.
The installation people all have certificates of liability. All the equipment that's going in is based off of a municipal contract. So the liability of installation goes to the municipal contract. So it's really a cut and dry portion. It went through DCAM, the whole process went through, you know. Again, it's up to the board.
The way it's written in terms, I'm sorry. The way it's written in terms of liability is that you're each responsible for each other's negligence. So usually, you know, if the Greater Lowell School doesn't, you know, has faulty stairs, for example, and someone trips and falls, usually you'd be liable for that because you were negligent not repairing your stairs. And usually if the Lowell Water Department, you know, doesn't screw down, let's call it the antenna, properly and it goes flying off somewhere, they'd normally be responsible for that because that was negligence. Again, I'm not suggesting any of these things will happen, but usually you're responsible for your own. The way it's written in the liability piece is you're responsible for each other's. And I haven't seen that before. So that was sort of why we rewrote that. So it's all for contingencies. It's not for the everyday in and out, what happens. It's sort of the legal risk part that we changed.
Suppose we vote back to Mr. Booton's motion, one form or another. And at some point over the next period, you know, the two sides, you know, the city and Greater Lowell, come up with some realistic agreement. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and I would agree. Installation and maintenance are really two different items in the water industry. Installation is when you're putting something in and the contractor is always set with all his liability insurances, have to come bonded through the contracts. They're the installation people, not the City of Lowell, so they'll install. A maintenance end would be our end. And that could go, that's what I am here to do. I can maintain something once it's put in. It's part of the City of Lowell's infrastructure. But to put it in, I can't bind the City of Lowell.
Sorry, I want to hear from Mr. Gonzalez.
Just to address Mr. Tully's point directly, there, of the, excuse me, the agreement as it was approved by Lowell last night, I believe, or Tuesday night, it does have an amendment provision. So if you did adopt this now and say, you know, we want to change the liability, there's no reason why you couldn't do that down the line. Of course, it's prospective, not retroactive. So, you know, if something happens for you now when you change it, the liability provision as it's written now, assuming you adopt this tonight, would still apply.
I would think.
I would think that if we were to, if you were to vote to approve it, I mean, you know, Lowell's a partner. We're partners. So I think in good faith, you know, you're trying to get things done in an efficient way. Went to the council on Tuesday. We're getting it tonight. If you were to vote to approve it as is and ask our attorneys to work with their attorneys on an amendment that everybody will be mutually agreeable to. I mean, I think we get to where we want to get to, you know, maybe a month from now. But it doesn't hold up the project, you know, working in good faith.
All right, a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
So the motion would be to approve this with the-
Mr. Tatsias's motion is to accept the memorandum of understanding as is.
And your, add on, what was your provision, proviso, that you wanted to put in there?
So I think that the attorney-
It's already in.
The attorney would exercise the amendment provision to negotiate the wording that mutually would be agreeable to make it a better document, right?
Yeah, and they can do that at any time. All they have to do is call. It doesn't take a vote of the committee to do that. You could tomorrow morning-
And then it would go to the council and come back here. No, Mr. Tatsias's motion is fine because the amendment provision is already in that agreement.
Correct.
So they'll, you know, Kelly and Michael exercise that immediately on our behalf.
So the, just to be clear now, the wording of this motion is?
To accept the memorandum of understanding as is.
As proposed and passed by the Lowell City Council.
And our attorney says that that's acceptable because of the provision listed in it.
Okay. Now, the motion was made by Mr. Tatsias. Who made the second?
Mr. Espinola.
Mr. Espinola, okay.
Okay, ready? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes.
Chairman O'Hair, Superintendent Bourgeois, members of the committee, I want to thank you and wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And Cheryl, thank you for all your hard work in getting the quarries and everything together for this project.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Eric. We look forward to working with you.
Okay. Motions, okay. I'm going to get back to the right page here.
Oh, really? Your due diligence.
Okay, are we ready? Okay, motions that are- Okay, we got attention here. Okay, first motion by Mr. Tatsias to have the Public Policy Subcommittee look into amending the hiring policy to include Mass General Law Chapter 71, Section 67
Or counter space.
pertaining to the hiring of family members of the school committee and school administration. Seconded by Mr. Bahu. Mr. Tatsias.
Well, I think what we're just doing is following Mass General Law's Chapter 71. And I think that should be part of the policy that, you know, in our committee. So I think we should adopt it.
Okay, Mr. Booton.
I think it's a great motion, and I agree. It should be written in. I would actually ask the maker of the motion to amend your motion to approving it tonight. I don't think there's any reason why we as a body wouldn't say putting it in and following the law, it's important and I think we should do it now. So I would ask the maker of the motion to amend it, and I think we should do it tonight. Second? Do you have to second a?
Wait a minute, we got, we have a motion, a second? All right, second, okay.
A substitute motion?
I'm just curious, like, it's a Mass General Law.
Yep.
We have to follow Mass General Laws. So I don't understand what this is going to make for us as this. I understand the motion, but it's a law. And we are abided by the laws, correct? Or am I not correct?
No, you're right.
So if I could just respond, one of the other municipalities locally just had the same situation happen. And I don't believe, I read anywhere, that they followed the law. And we have a policy, our hiring policy, which the superintendent, I think, may have done a month or two before you got here, just revamped it, but it wasn't in there. And having not just this wording, but what the law actually is in our policy will help to explain to everybody else the notice that you're supposed to give when you're hiring someone. So we're supposed to follow a lot of laws, but I know another municipality didn't. And we may not be here in four, five, six, 10 years. It should be in the policy, so it's in there. It should be in the policy, so it's in there. And that's why I think it's a great motion.
I'm still confused. It's a law we have to follow.
Absolutely. And what this would do, if I may, is raise awareness to make sure that somebody doesn't make a mistake down the line and not miss the fact that there's a law to this effect and not follow it.
And your human resources department has now incorporated that in the application process, correct?
We've incorporated the question in the application process to make sure that we're asking the question so that we're aware that somebody might be related to somebody. So we've already done that, you know, based on the original motion. So as part of our procedure, we've incorporated that. But to answer Mr. Espinola's question, it's just, it's sort of like a double check to make sure that it's, that people are aware of it, that we have a very, you know, very nice hiring policy. And it's just to make sure that as part of that hiring policy, that people are reminded to follow that law.
Mr. Tatius?
You have to follow it anyway.
Mr. Tatius, go.
I'm reading from the City of Lowell Law Department letter to the city council. There are currently three variations...
Do we have a copy of that?
Pardon?
Do we have a copy of that?
No.
Oh.
You might.
What is it again? I'm sorry.
City of Lowell Law Department, Superintendent Gene Franco and members of the Lowell School Committee, they just adopted this policy.
What did they adopt?
They were, well, no, actually, they adopted a much, a more stringent policy. What I'm proposing is to adopt...
What, could I just, I don't mean to be, could you just read it off? Because I don't know what a, you know, a stringent, you know, the law's the law. I understand it. I have a whole book of laws that...
And that's what I thought, too, right? But there are currently three variations of policies which address the hiring of family members. Approximately 60 communities in Massachusetts currently have adopted some policy. Of those, the vast majority, 44, have formally adopted the approach which pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws requires two weeks' notice to the public before a school district hires a member, the immediate family of a superintendent, central office administrator, or school committee member. Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 67, immediate family. In this context, means the person, spouse, parents, children, brothers, sisters. Mass General Law's Chapter 268A, Section 1, paragraph E. At least 44 Massachusetts school districts have policies that reflect this state law minimum. There also exists a minority of Massachusetts school districts, 16 approximately, which go further than state law requires. These districts ban hiring of immediate family members altogether while grandfathering any previously hired family members. There is lastly another alternative, which has not been adopted by any other Massachusetts school district. Under this approach, the ban on hiring applies to extended family as well as immediate family. Extended family would include grandparents, grandchildren, uncles, aunts, in-laws, and potentially other relatives as well. This type of policy typically includes a provision that the school's governing body may approve an exception to the policy. This approach, which could lead to cumbersome conflicts, has been adopted in a few communities in Maine. The same could be true for the second opinion that has been utilized in a minority of communities. If adopted, it could hamper otherwise sound hiring and promotional decisions. Accordingly, the most practical approach under the circumstances may be to implement the policy utilized by a majority of communities in the Commonwealth and after a period of time assess its effectiveness.
And that's what you're asking?
So, but I have a question.
We have people asking.
Just one question. Did you amend it, the motion to vote it in tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, and does that have to be seconded? I think, Mr. Bahu, did you second that?
Okay.
Okay. So we would be voting on the substitute motion. I just want to get that clear.
The motion is to amend...
Thank you. I don't want to talk about anything. I agree with it.
Not to amend to the policy, but the motion is now to amend the hiring policy to include Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 67, and the rest of the law.
Could you take the chair? I just want to say a couple of... Mr. Bahu was going to take the chair. I just have a couple of things to say. Mr. Bahu, I know, I don't know what...
I'll hear you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Is that a lawyer's opinion that you're reading? That's, what, is it one of our lawyers?
I think it was the... City of Lowell Law Department. The City of Lowell Law Department disagreed with the, their vote, the school committee's vote.
Yep.
They went above the law or beyond the law. Absolutely prohibited.
You don't want to go beyond the law, basically.
I'm just saying we adopt the policy to follow Mass General Law.
Let me just say a couple of things. And I don't, I don't want you to think that I'm adamant about this, but I kind of disagree with this whole process. Number one, I have a book that was given to me by the state. It's over 500 pages of laws that we follow every day, okay? But we picked out, or you picked out, one of those laws and want to change it. Now, usually when something like that happens, there's some background for that, the reason for that, on hiring, the hiring process. The first thing is that we don't hire. School committee doesn't hire. That's the superintendent. All right? We approve a superintendent's hiring, but we don't hire the teachers. The other thing is, what prompted this one rather than the other 499 laws that are in this book? Something happened, you know, I was involved in a situation like this a while ago, that I was contacted by the Ethics Commission by somebody who thought they knew the law and wrote to the Ethics Commission, I think a few of my colleagues who aren't even here today. But everything is legal. Everything is to the letter of the law that's in this book. I went through a couple of my old books and here's one I had from 1978. Same situation, the same law, no changes, no problems. And we're trying to make a big deal out of something which we haven't had any problems with. Now, well, I'm serious. That's not funny. That's a serious thing. I don't know what the issue is if someone is telling you something that's incorrect. I don't know. But I, you know, just, all the time I've been on a school committee, and to me, it looks like you're pointing at the superintendent because he's the hiring person. It's not us. All right? And I just go through a whole list of superintendents I served with or under, starting with Earl Sharman, Pat Morgan, Wayne Peters, Henry Maras, George Sappasaris out here, Bill Collins, Sheila Herbert, Cassin, Mary Jo Santoro, and then the short-term gentlemen, Bobby Lucia and Jack Jones. And in all those years, I don't know if we ever had a problem with the hiring policy.
Then it shouldn't bother you.
Then, well, the thing that surprises me is why is it coming up now?
Well, it came up in the City of Lowell.
No, no, no. I'm talking about why is it coming up here now?
Because...
Mr. Tully?
No, I think the thing is, it's just, it's the law that we've been following. So let's just insert it in the policy book as it's been requested and move on.
We've been following it. He just wants it spelled out, that's all.
Let's do it.
Can I say one thing? Sorry, Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Booton, go ahead.
The one thing I will say about Mr. Tatius' motion, that it's already gotten the superintendent to ask our human resources to change our application, because before this, there was no spot on the application to say, are you related immediate family member to the school? So in a sense, this has helped us and we're learning from it. We just had another municipality that I haven't heard anything about them stating, was it 14 days that you have to state it? So, and also when we make these motions and approve these motions, we're not just looking at today, a week, a year. We're looking at five, 10 years. So four, five, 10 years from now, somebody will remember that policy that'll never be taken out. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Hair?
I just want to say one thing. I agree with you. But we're going to remember one law. That's all we're being asked to. There's 500 laws in here. We don't care about those. But we have to spell this one. We have to spell this one out? Somebody is mad at somebody. I got to tell you that. All right? I don't know who it is.
We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Tatius, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
So just to be clear, I'm going to take our hiring policy. I'm going to insert the law as well as, the reference to the law as well as the law itself into that policy, and then I'm going to bring it back to you to approve. Because now it's been amended, right? I'm going to amend it and I'm going to bring it back to you for your approval next meeting. And I'm just going to insert the law.
Excuse me, our policy is...
The application's a procedural thing. We're just doing that to make sure that we're staying in compliance. When this conversation first began, what I said to myself was, I don't want to inadvertently hire somebody not knowing that they're related to somebody. That's why I'm asking them under the penalties of state, in the application, whether or not they're related to anybody. Just to make sure that we don't, that I don't put in, that I'm not put in a position where, you know, inadvertently not knowing.
And pretty easily have.
So we put that safeguard and that's all, that's already done. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next motion by Mr. Espinola to have the committee explore the possibility of periodically bringing the Grady Lowell Technical School Committee meetings into the communities we serve. Motion by Mr. Espinola, seconded by Mr. Tatius. Go.
To Mr. Chairman, to everybody. I'm going to table this for some time. I've had some conversations with the superintendent in regards to, we're going to have some community days with the sending communities. I don't believe, no, I haven't heard from my other board members other than the other representative, Mr. Moran from Drakett, that there is some animosity with the towns, especially our town, in regards to the budget, transportation costs. And it seems like there's a carte blanche type of an attitude. And after talking to people that have been here since I was going to this school, there's never been an appetite for any type of conversations in regards to collaboration of information or discussing budgets, whatever. Right now, having, what I'm trying to do is trying to reach out to the districts, especially Drakett, and to have some type of a working environment and at least a working understanding of how the budget's made up, where it comes from, how things are done, so that people understand where, because there are the school committees that are struggling to, just like we are, to try to do things for the students. There's some talk in Drakett about, you know, maybe we should pay to transport, the kids should pay to transport, you know, and I always look at it, is it fair to have the kids in Drakett, going to Drakett High School, pay for their transportation? And the Grady Lowell kids that come from Drakett not pay for transportation? Is it fair? No. And I would say that if I thought that the kids should pay for anything. I believe that the students should be able to be free and clear because they can have all of their problems with their bills and whatnot when they go to college. So I'm just hoping that at some point in time, we can open up into the communities, maybe bringing this particular meeting into Lowell, Drakett. Obviously, there are some segments where we're going to have to, you know, have them taped. But even in an open collaboration, non-binding, just an open, maybe a free-forming information session so that we can kind of understand where everybody's coming from. And that's what I'm trying to open up right now. And after speaking with the superintendent, he's going to open up the, Mr. Tully, I believe made a motion at some point in time earlier this year, that we have the community days where they come to the school and they took a look and see what we have to offer. And I believe once we have an open discussion and an open dialogue and a free and clear of where they're coming from, where we're coming from, it might be a little better understanding. So I'm going to table my motion for the time being and I did it more for discussion purposes.
Can I ask a question?
Let me just ask, are you talking about both in, both motions?
Both my motions, I'm sorry. I meant to say I wanted to do them both at the same time. I'm sorry.
Okay, that was the, I didn't want to...
And I did talk about them both at the same time. I apologize.
Thank you. I would say to you, you have an uphill battle to do. I have friends that are selectmen. I've spoken to the state rep. I've spoken to school committee members and explained the situation of what we have. I found that bringing them here and taking them on a tour, it's the gotcha moment. Oh, you have a machine shop here. You have a garage, you know, a mechanic's garage, an auto tech area. So coming here is, I think, great to bring them in, and you can see that. But I've also talked to my friends from Drakett, where I lived when I was younger and graduated from Drakett High, about us having 24% of kids on IEPs and them only having 8%. And the difficulty is, and the additional funding we need for that, and we take those kids and they thrive, that we don't take their kids that exceed on MCAS. We take kids that aren't passing MCAS and get them to pass. So we're not taking what we've heard they're best and brightest. Well, we're taking their best. They may not have scored the highest on the MCAS, but we're making them the brightest. And I've had those conversations and I don't envy you or Mr. Moran in your position to try and get through to them, that this school is a great school and they should be focusing on getting their school the resources they need.
The same conversation that you just applied to your past comments are things that most of the elected officials in Drakett have no idea about, that they think we have the best and brightest and we get to choose the people that come here. And we are, you know, we have an option of making sure that if they don't do well, we can send them back to them. And that's what I'm talking about. I don't believe, with the more conversations that I have with people and the more information that I get to people out there, sort of along the same lines that you have, you're friends with some people on the board, Mr. Moran's friends with people on the board, every time you give them some more information, it's things that they never heard of. And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to bring an open dialect into something that, I mean, other than putting a flyer up on access cable television, I don't know how else to do it. I think it'd be, somebody will get something out of it.
I just wanted to clarify my statement. We do have the best students. They may not be the brightest by MCAS, but when they get here, they thrive and they become the brightest students. So understand that. We do make them to be fantastic. So, thank you.
I would just applaud my colleague's efforts in bringing up anything to help his district or Tingsboro or Dunstable. I think as members, we want to make people more aware and have the availability. Maybe we don't have the availability, but come to ways and means of enlightening the public of what we are, what our entity does, what we have available. And as you said, you've addressed this to people that have been in public life probably prior to you being here, yet it's all new to them, or they didn't know this. So I can only imagine what transpired prior to that. So I think you and your colleague, Mr. Moran, are doing your man's work as far as trying to enlighten your district. And if we can help in any way, I'm willing to stand with you and help.
What happens sometimes is you talk to someone, I'll talk to friends and say, oh, I've never been out at this. I've never even been in the school.
Mr. Espinola, just one thing, I just wanted to tell you, some of your predecessors, it was kind of just the opposite, and I think everything is what time it is, you know? But, and they were concerned about the lack of students from Drakett coming to Grady Lowell. They worked hard and we got a lot more children into Grady Lowell. The community leaders, we've had community leaders nights with the entire district and also with individual towns, and I thought they were fabulous. Very good, very helpful. Okay, who? Okay.
We don't need a vote.
No. Okay, next item, report of the subcommittees.
There's one more. I'm sorry. Go ahead, you got it.
Report of the Subcommittee's Approval of the November 20th, 2014, Grady Lowell Technical High School.
With approval.
Building Committee report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lemay, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes.
I need the motion for the change order.
Change order, amendments.
Change order number four, along with contract amendment five and budget revision number six for $379,033.65.
Move.
Okay, motion by, who is that? Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr., all right. Espinola. Espinola.
Thank you. Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
We need assistance.
Executive session for contract negotiations.
Yep.
Move. Okay, four minutes. We still left the vote on...
We're doing the motion for executive session of contract negotiations.
Oh, yeah, we got that, too. We did them separately.
Yes.
Seconding, Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Executive session for contract negotiations.
Yep. Move. Okay, four minutes.
We still left the vote on.
We're doing the motion for executive session of contract negotiations.
Oh, yeah, we got that too.
We did them separately.
Yes.
Seconded, Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yep. Five minutes recess. Okay, meeting back to order.
Wait a minute, I got to get my. All right. Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Tatzias?
Here.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here. Motion pass, a meeting. Okay, what do we get here now?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to accept the collective bargaining agreement, contract.
Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Tatzias. We all set? Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
No.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Can I have Mr. Moran take a vote?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 all right.
Next.
Okay, next on the agenda, one person, one vote.
Okay, what do we got here? Okay.
I got Paul too.
Did you sign it?
No, Paul's got to sign it.
Can we go in there and give them all?
Yeah, let them wait.
No, 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 no. Okay, what do we got here now? We are, going to talk on this again?
One person, one vote?
Yep.
So. I'll bring it up, I'd like to discuss one man, one vote and a possibility that was suggested to us by our attorney with the help of Mr. Tully as far as changing our quorum to meet the one man, one vote. I asked, Mr. Chairman, if we can ask the attorney to explain it?
Yep. Ma'am?
One of the options for school committee composition is to have weights voted according to population. So the first step would be for the school committee in the member towns to vote to amend the regional agreement, to have a weighted vote. And then the second step would be to amend the definition of the term quorum as used in the regional agreement, to make it so that a quorum for the purposes of transacting business and taking votes would require both a majority or 50% plus one in terms of number and in terms of weight of votes. So in other words, you need to have 50% plus one of votes for a vote to pass and you would need at least 50% plus one of the number of members for vote to pass. And according to the current composition and populations, what that means is that you would need at least two members from the city of Lowell for any vote to pass, even if all four members of the three-member towns voted to approve something. And on the flip side, you need at least one member from the city of Lowell to approve any motion for it to count in terms of, so that you have the five people in terms of, sorry, you would need at least one person from one of the three member towns to vote on a motion for it to pass, that you have the 50% plus one in terms of number of people.
Okay, and most of that is included in the papers that you gave us on?
Right, and I will maybe possibly amend that a little bit more to make it clear and I will circulate it to the superintendent, to circulate it to the school committee and possibly to council for the member towns.
Okay. Any comments?
No, I think it's a, yeah, I would.
Okay, are we going to take a vote to?
Nope, we're just having a discussion.
Okay. And the next step with this is going back to your office and you're going to communicate with Roger.
Correct.
Okay, good.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman? I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
When you're considering the one person, one vote, the options are either a district-wide vote or a appointment of a board or a weighted vote that may give just one city, like Lowell, three votes to go ahead and control the board. I think this idea of having to go ahead and have at least two people from Lowell and at least the majority of the board to go ahead and pass it, it's almost like a two-part